Good evening. I would like to call the ZBA meeting of November 18th, 2024 into order. Please rise and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to draw your attention to the emergency exits, which is the door that you came in and the doors at the ends of the hallway back here and over here. At this time, I'd like to start with item number one on the agenda, jet management, area variance. The applicant is seeking an area variance to convert commercial multi-use into apartment living space. Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B, requires a minimum area of interior living space of 800 square feet. Apartment A is 634 square feet. Apartment B is 486 square feet. And Apartment C is 655 square feet. The applicant is seeking relief from this area and bulk requirement with a positive referral from the planning board. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Welcome back.
Hello, thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. My name is Jim Traynor. I'm here for the area variance and my engineer couldn't be here. He had an overseas planned trip planned, so.
Who said?
Yeah, and so.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask if you would walk us through, again, the area variance.
Right, I think, you know, one of the questions, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the nearby properties being created by granting the variance? Nope, because many of the buildings in the area, including building adjacent to the site, has apartments with substandard square footage. Two, can the desired result be achieved by some other means than granting a variance? And the answer to that is no, spaces for the apartments already existing and no construction is proposed. Three, is the variance substantial? No, the apartment's variance size, two are over 600 square feet, the third is almost 500 square feet. Total square footage of the building is 2,010 square foot, where 2,400 square foot is needed. Will the variance have an adverse effect of impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? And that's no, no construction is proposed to this building. Therefore, the granting of the variance will not create any environmental or physical impact on the neighborhood or district. Is the alleged hardship self-created? Nope, the square footage of the apartments are based on existing spaces and no construction or addition to the building are proposed to this building.
Okay, so, thank you for going over those.
So, this is a reuse of an existing building. It's a Type 2, there's no additional footprint. So he's looking to reconfigure the existing space. What is there now?
Right now, there's one residential apartment and two commercial spaces that, you know, nothing has changed, that's the way it was.
Can you confirm what the square footage of the residential apartment is currently? The existing?
Yeah, the existing one, one of them is 600 square feet.
No.
So there's one apartment currently?
No, the existing apartment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Is the variance substantial? The apartment's variance size, two are over 600 square feet. The third is almost 500 square foot.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure I explain the question correctly. So you said there's an existing apartment and there were two commercial spaces currently in the building?
Yes.
Can you just confirm what the square footage of the pre-existing apartment is?
The pre-existing one is 600 square feet.
600, okay. So I guess I'm confused because here we say that, is it 634?
Or 655?
Or 655?
I think it's probable, whatever's on the plan, does he have it on the plan, the square footage? I'm pretty sure on my, on your plan, I think it shows the square footage of each apartment.
Six, here it is, right here. Let me A's this and there's B.
Yeah, we have one at 634 and one at 655. But they're saying 600, so that's what we're.
Well, that's, I think that's what they're making it as.
Oh, I think he has 655, 486 for the other one. The existing is 634. Okay, so it's A. A is the existing.
I don't think it's marked here. Okay, so. So the only variance for your consideration is the area variance required in the schedule, the bulk schedule that requires 800 square feet per apartment, per accessory apartment in the town center zoning designation. This is the only zoning designation that requires that type of square footage. You're seeking relief from that.
So we're taking a commercial multi-use building and we're gonna use it completely for essential?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no issue with changing a commercial building? Like could Dollar General?
Cause they turn 800 or.
Yeah, so.
Give me that number for the variance.
800?
634.
1.66.
Okay, hang on. 800 minus 655.
Oh, I see. 1.45.
Okay, and then 800 minus 486.
314. If you wanna go around and discuss each criteria one by one, maybe you can deliberate that way.
All right. Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to neighborhood properties be created by granting the variance? And I have to agree that apartments adjacent, buildings adjacent has apartments, uncertain about the substandard part though, I haven't checked on that. The part I'm checking problems with is can the desired result be achieved by some other means than granting the variance? And I'm sure you know, the one I'm struggling with is the 486 needing a variance of 314, so C. But if you were to split apartment, actually B, I'm sorry about that, Apartment B, the one requiring the most, and making two larger apartments, you would be able to get around the need for variance altogether? Yeah, the only problem with that, you know, was pre-existing spaces and there's block wall through, you know, separating them and, you know, that's the way it was. It had, you know, back-to-back bathrooms and stuff like that. Kinda like right in the, it's right in the middle there. It would be a substantial cost to that. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty much a doorway in both of the block walls, right? And then a center position in the middle of that apartment, so it would be added on to each one, right? Well, there's all plumbing.
Goes through there?
Goes through there.
Excuse me. All right. Yes, all right, so we're looking at.
You know, there, there, there's no stairs to get in.
It's all one level.
It's all one level. There, it's all neat, clean, there, you know, it's really efficient apartment. It's not like, it's not like it's crammed if you went in there and saw it.
Right.
It's, you know, it is good for one or two people. I've had older people already come to me and ask me about.
Renting it out.
About renting it out. They saw, I'm a painting contractor, I traded, so I, you know, I made everything neat, clean. You know, when I got the building, it was in really ill repair. I mean, and I'm still gonna keep working on it, like, you know, so that's, you know.
Can I clarify one thing?
Sure, sure.
So, you know, we're, we're kind of talking hypothetically about the idea of creating an opening in a wall and then, you know, splitting up that space to have two apartments, right? And I just wanna, just wanna confirm something. Is that something you had explored and you had a plan for or that there was no way to do it? That, that would help me a lot to understand.
Yeah, that's, you know, there's, in that middle space where the separation of the walls are, right there is the back-to-back bathrooms and underground plumbing to go out to the tank, is all right in that middle. All the water lines are right in the middle there.
And do they run horizontally on that wall?
Yeah, there's some, some are horizontal, some are right underneath that wall. It's a lot to do and that's the way it was. It wasn't like, you know, I changed anything.
So, just so I'm clear, was it something that you had explored and you have something that you could share with us, a write-up where there is no way to put an opening in that wall? Or is it more, it's fine either way, but I just wanna make sure that I understand? Or is it more informal that it'd probably be inconvenient to explore that?
Yeah, it would definitely be inconvenient to explore it for the, for the work that has to be done.
Can I make a question?
Sure.
Could I speak?
This is my, this is my cousin.
Jim's my cousin, I'm a contractor down in Putnam, I have an office down in Mayapack. And when he bought the building, that was one of the questions, he asked me, you know, what else could we possibly do?
Can we get your name?
I'm sorry, yeah, my name is Carl Albano. And one of the things when we looked at and I had plumbers, electricians, we looked at it, it was extremely expensive. It was really ripping the building apart and changing everything the way it's organized right now. So it just wasn't cost-effective at all, unless he wanted to really gut the place and go to the next level. The building is costing a fortune already and it's neat, it's clean, and it works. The other thing is that we're also a realty down in Mayapack, there's a tremendous demand today for small units for single people. So it just seemed like the most logical thing to go in this direction.
Right.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Did he say elder people, for who? What kind of people?
For anybody that are small.
It's a one. It's an elder.
Yeah, so everything's one level. It's real efficient apartments, they're, they're nice, you know.
The meters are already there for all three?
The meters are already there. There's actually, yeah, there's one, two, three, four, there's five meters there, brand new.
Five meters for three? For three apartments?
Yeah, there's one that's not being used there. It was, it was there beforehand.
But that's, then that makes it four meters, so what's?
What's that?
If there's five and you're seeing one not being used.
Yeah, I have, there's.
The utilities of the property, that's what they usually do, like, when you rent a property, they have separate needs for the outside lights and tech building order.
All right, so that gets us to four, one for each apartment. What's the, what's the fourth one?
The landlord.
The landlord.
Okay.
The building order for the stuff that's outside the property, lighting.
Lighting, yeah.
Offices not affiliated to tenants.
So that's not, yeah, they're not attached to the apartments.
Or for the non-area, you know, for electric.
Right, so there's three, one for each apartment, the fourth one be landlord beater, and the fifth one is?
Not usable.
Not, there we go. Thank, I'm sorry, I missed it. Yeah, I'm sorry, no, no, you're good. All right, why we got you there? Let me just kick this, is there a variance substantial? No apartments variance size. Three kinda kicks me for.
Yeah, I live in the, I live on Greenhaven Road. I used to own the building down the road across Mounds Tree Service. I had it for, I had it for 25 years.
The one with the millstone in front of it?
With, I put the stone there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did the stone wall with the, with the stone and everything. That, that place when I bought it back in 95 was a mess. The town was getting a lot of complaints of tenants and, you know, landlords were fighting and, and I actually got a compliment, you know, later on that they didn't, since I took it over, they never got a complaint. So, you know, I've lived here for 20, 20, over 20 years now in Greenhaven Road. I built my house across from Flagler.
Yep.
So it's not like I'm an absentee landlord, I'm, you know, I'm gonna be here, you know, I take pride in what I do, you know, so.
Yeah, believe me.
Just trying to give you an idea of, you know, that place was a mess over there. And we, alls we did was work on it and fix it up.
Yeah, we, we wanna see you make use of the, the building for sure. You know, just trying to flush out the, the variances here.
I think I've hit all the questions, I could hit them the way I want, you know, what do
I have a quick question. So the smallest apartment is, it is the one in the rear, right? The one in the back?
No.
It's not?
It's in the front on the left side, but they're, they're identical in like a bedroom, the bathrooms.
There's no way.
So you have a, a block wall between the back one and the, the one coming towards up in the left corner.
The two in the front, two in the front have a separating block wall going through. And there's underground plumbing under that wall.
Yeah, so where's the block, is there a block wall from the second, the one on the?
You have the one in the back?
If I can draw your attention, apologies.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, okay, that's, there you go. I have this in my car.
Oh, it's up on the screen there.
But so, so this is the one with the block wall canopy, that's the bathroom, the bathroom. And this was the existing apartment.
The two apartments, it's all blocked, and then the back wall is blocked too.
So this was the existing apartment? Cause he said it was 600.
In the back, I think.
No, no, 634, yeah. So the one in the front's the 400 and something odd square foot.
But if you saw it, it's real efficient, it's, and like you said, you walk right into the front door to one level. You see the big bedroom on the, whatever size of closet in that, there's a walk-in closet, full kitchen, you know, it's a, it's a nice apartment.
Me or you?
No, me and you.
If the, if the board does not grant this variance, what are you gonna do with the two other spaces? What can you do with those two spaces?
The two front ones, what other space?
Well, you have, which, which apartment is existing?
The one in the back is existing.
Okay, Apartment B and Apartment C.
Well, it's really B, right? Cause C would be in compliance.
B and C are the ones that we're looking, you know, I think all three.
Apartment A is the one in existence.
No, but I'm saying C is above the.
No, 800.
Oh, 800, oh, I'm sorry.
800, yeah, yeah. The mark, got it. I think the engineer has all three looking for the variance.
I mean, to be honest.
Even though it's existing, but I think he was trying to, right?
Are you reconfiguring the space to Apartment A?
No.
That's pre-existing.
Right, it's pre-existing, right, it's already done, right?
Right, so A is not really, we're not talking about A.
No.
We're talking about B and C.
What else could you do with that space?
I tried to rent it as offices and I advertised it, I, I had no.
Break this apart, make the apartment bigger.
One was, they didn't wanna rent the office, they just wanted to park trucks out there. It was like Junk Pro was one of them, the other one was, I'll be honest with you, it was a biker guy, wanted to rent the offices for like a club and.
Like I'm saying, even if it wasn't there to make.
That was it. Then I had a hardwood floor guy come looking for warehouse space, which wasn't big enough for him either. So I, you know, I did try, I had it listed with Century 21 as commercial, but nothing. But as far as apartments go, it was, you know, I have a list.
Wow, that's a good one. You haven't had a good one like this in a while. Is there anything else?
No, I think we exhausted the questions, it's just, you know, where do we stand on now? I mean, do you have any further questions for?
No, I, I can, you know, like I said, all the, all the plumbing is directly one line. It would be literally not feasible because all, everything that's plumbing is all on a straight line. To, to move it and figure out where pipes are going, you'd have to, you'd have to probably break up either the foundation or go through other walls.
Well, I guess, I mean, I'm still trying to figure this out and I apologize, this is not my area of expertise, but is the plumbing in the wall between Apartment B and Apartment C?
Yes.
And it's running down that whole wall? So even though there's no, hold, just one second, I apologize. So even though there's nothing that requires water in the front of the building, there's plumbing right by the front of the building there?
There might be a five-foot space with no plumbing in it.
Okay.
But underground, there's plumbing, there's, in the wall, there's definitely plumbing. It would, it still wouldn't be feasible for me to make that one apartment, right? You're saying make that one apartment?
So why do you?
You know, there's already, there's already kitchens.
I got it.
In, in them too.
Now, the kitchens are there from when it was a commercial space?
Yeah, it was there, I just, alls I did was update.
The, the commercial spaces had kitchen?
Back-to-back kitchens and baths were in there. And same with the back apartment also, I just updated.
Well, but those, those commercial spaces in the front were a lot like apartments back then?
I don't know what he did, you know, I never met the previous owner.
But there were bathrooms and kitchens and.
There's bathrooms and kitchens, he might have, I don't know what he was doing there, but that was the plumbing company, trying to think of the name. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of commercial spaces all had their.
Could've been a showroom.
Yeah, well, most of them all always have the, the bathrooms, whether they're full baths or half baths for commercial. It, so really the, what was added in there at some point was the, the stoves, right?
Must be.
Yeah, and then the ability to put a dryer and washer in. Otherwise, everything else is still applicable to commercial.
Where's the bathroom in this one? I can't even see it. Where is it? It's gotta be up.
On Apartment A, where, where is the bathroom on that one?
It's very top.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you. We got it, at least it just.
So that, that, that sink and everything over in Apartment A, that was always there, right there? The plumbing's in that wall?
Yes.
Oh, then you can do, okay.
And open it to the public?
Okay, so I'd like to open this up for public comment, so I'd like to invite anyone from the public to approach if they'd like to speak on this. Anyone?
Anyone? It was anyone?
Yeah, you can talk.
Yes, absolutely.
No, just, I watched James' project and like I said, I do construction.
Come up to the microphone, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. Being pre-existing, the building was in terrible shape and he really did a lot of work to it. And now it's a financial thing to make it work. And, and he's, he's gonna continue to keep making it even better. He lives right down the street. I know he has his heart into it. Financially, to make the thing work, this is the ideal situation, you'll have it occupied right away. And I think it'll be a plus for the community, you'll have a nice piece of property there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My daughter would like to read something.
Sure, absolutely. Could you state your name, please?
Yes, Audrey Traynor. So my name is Audrey Traynor, I'm the eldest daughter of James P. Traynor. I'm a certified English teacher for grades seven through 12, and I'm currently pursuing my master's degree in literacy education for grades five through 12. My family and I have been residents of Polk Wake since 2005. My siblings and I all graduated from Arlington High School. I'm writing today regarding the building my father has purchased on Route 55. And I would also like to express how I feel my father to be an extremely honest, hardworking, and deserving man. Throughout my life, I've seen my dad continuously work to support himself and our family. He has been the owner and operator of Jet Management LLC since 1995, as well as Paint Buster Inc. since 1987. His work ethic as a small business owner and a family-oriented man has always remained a constant model for everyone he comes to know. He possesses admirable, admirable leadership skills and organizational qualities. For example, I believe I'm the strong, smart woman I am today because of everyone in my family, but especially because of my father. It is mine, as well as the rest of my family's, hope that he will be able to rent out these apartments. And in doing so, he'll be able to continue providing for himself and our family. And additionally, he will be creating, you know, affordable and functional housing for new and/or current residents of Polk Wake. And lastly, I would like to thank the town for their support leading up to tonight's town meeting on 9/18/2024. And it is not without the support of our community that I feel like we've been able to make it this far in this process, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public wanna speak?
Yes, in about two seconds, we'll make a motion to close the public.
Yeah. So I, I think one of the concerns of, if I'm understanding you correctly, is whether or not this is a self-created hardship, you want to be able to ascertain from like an architect as to whether or not a, a wall could be built to go in between the Apartments A and B?
Or, or, or what would be involved in doing that? Because I, I think from my perspective, as a, as a board, I don't wanna ask something that's unreasonable, you know? So that's, so we're, we're looking at this now and, you know, without something in front of me to understand what it would take to do that, you know, I don't wanna just, you know, because that's not my expertise, so.
Like, what I, you know, what I could say about that is like, one, we'd have to eliminate a brand-new kitchen, okay? The other one is, you know, you have to break down.
Or it'd be an apartment with two kitchens.
Yeah, but, well, you know.
No, no, I mean, in other words, you wouldn't have to eliminate a kitchen to make it one apartment, right? It's not like the apartment couldn't have two kitchens. It would, it would be, it would be a waste of a kitchen, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a requirement, I don't think, that you would have to eliminate a kitchen, right? So, that's what, and again, what I'm trying to understand is, if we were asking you to turn B and C into one apartment, what would be entailed? If it's not doable?
You mean money-wise, like?
Exactly. What, what would be involved for you to do that? If it's not doable, then it'd be unreasonable for me to.
Right, it, it really is, you know, not, no disrespect, but it is, it is unreasonable request for that.
And, and so what, what I was asking council is, you know, is there any way that we could be presented with something more formal than just?
One of the criteria, one of the criteria that the board has to consider is whether the benefit sought by you can be achieved by some method which will be feasible for the applicant to pursue but would not require a variance. So.
I understand.
He's asking if you're, if you combined that, those, those apartments, B and C, whether or not that's feasible. If it's not feasible, he's asking for, I believe the board's asking for more proof of that.
Or any, I, I'd like to speak to that. I was a Putnam County licensed contractor for, I've been in business 47 years. I don't have a license right now, I think I let it expire there.
I don't have a license right now, I think I let it expire last year, I'm scaling down. When Jimmy started on this project, that was, he looked at a lot of different options, what he could do to make the building work efficiently. And I looked at it as a contractor and, you know, we could do anything, we could rip all the walls out. Economically, it really is not feasible. You're talking a lot of money and it wouldn't be desirable. The other thing to consider here too is the occupancy. A larger apartment, naturally, we rent to more people. You'd be reconfiguring this. Right now, the way the apartments are set up, there's probably gonna be one person, maybe two in each apartment. So the actual usage of the building is gonna be very similar. But as far as cost and trying to make this work, it would be crazy. You'd have to really rip it apart. And yeah, you could have two kitchens in one apartment. You know, just think about the logistics of it, but the expense part, it really would be a tremendous burden to try to do that.
And I just want to be clear-
And I can tell you, as a contractor, I know this very well, I did this my whole life.
No, I appreciate it and thank you for your, you know, your insights. I, you know, what, what I'm trying to, we're asked to evaluate these criteria and to make a determination based on these criteria, whether this variance should be granted. And what I was asking counsel and, you know, I would explain to you is that it would help me a lot in my determination if I could understand what would be the, what, what would be entailed in making that one apartment? Because if that was sheet rock and there were no pipes, it would be, you know, you could make a hole in the wall and, and, you know, half an hour, you'd be good to go. So, and, so that's why I'm, you know-
Yeah, and, and I could speak to that relatively well when we looked at it. You know, it's a block wall, you'd have to investigate what kind of weight it bears up into the roof. Like, so this could go from one step, many, many steps. Reconfiguring, cementing the, the pipes and the floors. I could just tell you from my experience, again, I've been in business forty-seven years. Can it be done? Yes, but it would really be crazy. You'd be ripping this building apart to achieve that.
Again, because I, I thank you for all this. Right now, you don't have from a, you know, a licensed contractor or from an architect or from anybody, you don't have a, a plan or an assessment of what it would take to turn that into one apartment, right? At this time, that's not, that's not a, a document or a, some, okay.
I could just speak to that as a contractor and if you'd like, I could put it in writing.
No, no, I appreciate, thank you so much.
Thank you.
What also becomes an issue is that if you can't, right? And that's what we're trying to get to the bottom of, that you absolutely can't. And, and believe me, everybody has got a reason why they come before, I mean, if, if it was all met code, nobody'd have to come before us. But when it gets to a point where there, there's so much to consider when given a variance, because you're in town center, right? It's, it's a commercial multi-use, right? And we're, we're looking at it, it is, and the hard part is it's town center. I wish it wasn't. But when we, if we grant a variance like this and something could have been changed so that you didn't have to come and get a variance, right? It would have been, it would be beneficial to you and us. And what happens is if, and I'm saying, and I'm sure Carl is correct, that the number is probably astronomical, it's probably up there. But without anything, it's, it's guesswork at best. And if we, if we make, if we make a vote on it without giving you all the due consideration, right? Of, we could end up voting no for a reason that wouldn't be valid had you just presented something that said, hey, it's load-bearing, it's gonna require removing that wall, a steel beam going in, and it's, you know, and I understand even that part costs money. Our problem is if we grant the variance and something could have been done and somebody says, yeah, we could have been in there and done that, I know that building. And, yeah, I'm just saying if they did, then we're, we're in a spot, you know, where we're just giving variances without doing our due diligence to make sure everything was checked.
I would, like, you know, I know that if the meeting was postponed, you know, if I would have known-
Yes, I, I know.
You know, from the engineer, I probably could have got you an ass-to-date.
Would the board benefit, do you think you'd benefit from hearing from an architect that this, these are weight-bearing walls and cannot be penetrated for, you know, walls and things like that?
I mean, I think what would be most helpful to me is to have a sense of what it would cost and, you know, to, to, to make that one, you know, to connect those, those spaces. And that's, that, that's what would be most helpful to me to weigh whether, you know, requiring that would-
Yes or no, right. Go ahead, I know Carl's, he's got something to say.
No, 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 he's sorry.
Be feasible, like, not to have, you know, both apartments, like, you know, monetarily, you just-
Right, so, yes.
That's one reason, but the other, besides the, the construction part, it, it'll cost a lot of money.
Right.
So if, if you're making three because it's not, it's not able to be done, I get that and-
I mean, it was three.
Yeah, yep, but, so, but now we're talking about living space and the four hundred is considerably small. And like I said, I wish it wasn't town center.
Isn't that like a state, um, does the state require that much square footage?
So there, all, there's different areas that require different square footage and there are spots that'll get apartments down to four hundred square feet. Town center's just not one of them. And that's why I said, I wish it wasn't town center for you. But, so what it comes down to is if, if it's planned this way because it can't be done to two and alleviate coming for a variance, I get it. If it, if it's being done because you'd rather the income of three, that's something we have to consider also, right? Right, so, and that, and that's what we're, we're looking at. And I'm sure that's what Chris is trying to get at and he's trying to pull information to, to get to the bottom of, you know. And I, certainly I understand, you know-
It is a structural, like, it's a structural wall.
Right, yeah.
But it's a one-level building, right?
Yes.
Right, so it's not, there's not a bunch of things above it that are, you know, that that wall is supporting beyond the roof, right? And if the whole wall is cinder block-
It's a load-bearing wall.
Yeah, but-
That is, yeah, with a flat roof, that's no longer a problem.
It's a load-bearing wall, it does get complicated, you're talking-
Yes.
And I could just say, again, I've been doing this forty-seven years. It, it's a major expense, it's really just economically not-
And I could tell you a hundred percent that if we're in the space of me trying to figure out if that's a good wall to put a hole in, we're having the wrong conversation. If I had something from an architect that said it can't be done, slam dunk for me.
Yeah, it's not gonna say it can't be done, it's-
Well, but they can put a number on it and then we can have a conversation about this is what it would be required and then it's very straightforward for me. Because the space has to be used.
Right. So the question would be, do you want to vote on it tonight? Or do you want to let him come back to next month's meeting with information on the cost?
You can ask for additional information, you know, in the form of, of an architectural opinion on that load-bearing wall and whether or not it's feasible.
Straw pole probably is a good idea. You know, and the thing to keep in mind is every month it's not rented. Maybe in six months, he could rip the wall down because he'll probably have the money. He's, he's been there a couple of years with this building vacant, it was ruined. He's, he's gonna be a good tenant, he put his heart into it. And again, think of the use and occupancies.
No, I want, for my part, I want you to be able to use it. So it's not a question, it's just that we, we're required to do our due diligence when we evaluate these, these applications. So, you know, for my part, I, I would like to invite you to come back to our next meeting with something that would give us a little bit more formal guidance on what would be entailed to, you know, make that one space by having a, an opening through there.
I could verbally tell you if you'd like. I'm just, I'm here, that's why I'm here, I drove up here just for that reason. You know, I'm, I was, my license is inactive now, I canceled it about a year ago, but for forty-something years, I was a licensed contractor. So, and, and he still is. You know, I could tell you what, exactly what's involved and you could just do the math in your head, you know. I'm not, I'm, you know what it is, I know all this time has gone by for him and I, I think he's really where he has to be. You know, if you want to do a straw, a straw pole and see where it's at, but, believe me, nobody's gonna tell you, this is an easy task to open that wall between cement work, floors that are all finished, ceilings, ceiling, carrying the load, the weight. That's why it's a block wall.
Pipes are probably in the-
Electrical-
They're probably in the, because you can't put pipes in a cinder block wall. They're probably under the, under the foundation, they're probably in-
But then there's wood walls on top of the cinder block walls, that's where piping is and wiring and everything. It's, it's really a double-thick wall.
Spaces for, there's some plumbing in the middle of that wall, towards the back. Like on the back wall, but in the other apartment, it's-
The previous owner, I don't know what they rented it as, but all of these spaces did exist and, um-
I think people were sleeping in there all night.
Thank you.
Yep. What do you want to offer up?
So, would you be interested in coming back with something from?
If I really had to, I mean, I'm just saying, like, you know, I know-
You don't have to, I mean, you, you know, you've submitted your application, we're trying to review it here as diligently as we can. You know, if you're satisfied with what you've submitted, then we can vote on it?
Right, I was just curious, like a straw pole maybe before, like, you know, I would like to get it done tonight if it, if it was positive, you know. We had, you know, positive recommendation from the planning board.
I think they, you already gave your straw pole. I think you've shown your, your cards there.
Well, I think it's the same-
It's the same thing?
No, no, I'm saying, I think the board members present tonight are the same board members who were here last, last time.
Yeah, we were.
The next month's meeting's only a couple of weeks away, right? Because we ended up coming into the middle of this month.
Right.
Also, it's only a couple of-
Two weeks away.
I know my engineer, he's in, he's overseas for, I think he's gonna be another week and a half.
Lisa, when's next month's meeting? First Tuesday. It's October first.
I don't think that's enough time.
Tuesday is October first.
For him to get his, the additional information.
I mean, well, you're looking for like an estimate from, or does it have to be a, he's not gonna do a plan.
No, 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 I, so, I, I don't want to speak for the other board members. For me, what would be really helpful is to have a sense of what it would, what would be entailed. So, you know, if there was some ballpark of, you know, this is what, what would be the, the involvement and the cost.
Let me just add something, I just want to, if, you know, I guess, you know, I probably would have to withdraw that, I mean, because I wouldn't do that anyway, you know what I mean? I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to make it one apartment.
Okay.
You know, besides the cost, you know what I mean? So, if that's, you know, the case, I mean, I can come back with an estimate from an engineer, they'll be willing to do that, or, you know, I'm trying to do the best I can over there.
Absolutely.
It's just, you know, so, I'm just, either way, you know, I would have to rent them as offices and if they slept in the office, you know, they, they do the same thing, you know what I mean?
The other thing, just to say, like, a real true estimate, if I was gonna bid on a job, I would say, well, to do it, we gotta rip open your walls, get into your ceiling, maybe go through the floors and see what you have. I would never commit to a price on this unless everything was exposed. Would be one of those, I think it's gonna be between ten and twenty thousand and it could be more. That's the kind of estimate I would give for a situation like this. Ten, twenty thou-, I'm just throwing a crazy number on, you're saying even more, right?
It's more, the roofs are different heights, that, that's a load-bearing wall, there's all underground plumbing going out to the side. There's electric in there, there's concrete work, that stuff. The kitchens would have to be removed. Yeah, I wouldn't leave one kitchen, like, I would leave two kitchens in a-
One apartment.
You have two contractors here, a lifetime of doing this, believe me, and it's all already here, nothing's changed.
The entrances, you already have two entrances, there's, there's a lot of work that you've done there. We should try and do it back.
This is all cinder block, correct?
So, I think you've, you've pretty much exhausted and discussed number two, which is whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method which will be feasible for the applicant to pursue but would not require a variance. The only way it would require a variance is if those two apartments were somehow joined together to make one apartment.
And we're getting a sense it's not feasible.
Well, certainly, well, it's, it's certainly not desirable.
Right, agreed. Right.
Even the pipes, even the pipes on apartment A are in the ground because they'd be, yeah.
They would all be affected.
Was that the-
The plumbing, the underground plumbing, because it all lies into the job of it. But that's a lot, it's a lot of work.
Was that the friends and family discount?
Like that?
I, I totally understand. If we didn't ask all this, we wouldn't be doing our part if we just wave everything through. And, and it really is kind of tough because the zoning for Beekman for accessory apartments allow square footage from four hundred to eight hundred. You know, you can be as low as four hundred and as high as eight hundred in accessory. So it's just, but town center is one of those other spots in town where the zoning is kind of tough and, you know, it's geared for trying to move more commercial into that area instead of residential homes or living space, but, um-
It's mostly all around there, apartment.
Yes, absolutely.
And you're proposing apartments down the road, right?
Right, and, and so, and that's what I'm saying is that the building stays apartments, it's still commercial. It doesn't mean it won't be sold off sometime to be another store, something on that property. Whereas, you know, putting a house in there kind of is residential, you know, and it'd probably be staying residential forever, so.
There's no race in-
It's all one level.
Because those are like stairs.
Well, it's just a little stair to a landing.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that we, we should go to a vote?
Yeah.
As long as he doesn't want to do a straw vote and hold off.
Is it something that you need, you need a, a number, an exact number from an engineer, is that what you're-
So for my part, to be able to understand the, the conditions for the variance where, you know, there's no way to avoid the variance, you know, I, I certainly appreciate that having three apartments is economically better than having two. So I, I'm a hundred percent on board.
That just comes with it, right?
It makes, makes total sense. But unfortunately, we're here on this variance and so I'm trying to get to the, the answer based on what, you know, you've submitted. And the one missing piece from my perspective here is what would it take to make it one apartment? And if it was not feasible to do it economically, then, you know, my, my sense would be that it would be unreasonable to ask you to do that. And that's-
I, I totally agree with you and I, I feel it would be unreasonable, but I was wondering what you think would be unreasonable as far as monetarily?
I don't think you can put a race tag on this, this is like-
I don't know if it's about the amount of-
It's not about money.
The money, I think it's the amount of work entailed that's the-
About whether or not it's feasible in the building.
Yeah.
But, and just so, from what I know, like, I've built houses, I've been in construction my whole life, I know that that's not a, you know, a one, two, three, it's gonna cost, you know, a substantial amount of money to do. You know, that I can tell you, you know, I would have to, I would have to explain to the architect what has to be done here because I know the building so well. You know, so, and I know, you know, I just don't know what, what you think monetarily would be the right, you know.
Well, I, I think, again, from my perspective- Well, I, I think, again, from my perspective, the number would be very informative. The number would be very informative. So, you know, I, I mean, if it was a thousand, then, no, no, I, I'm, I'm just explaining to you, you know, if it was a thousand, it would be a negligible figure for landlord to do, you know, uh, to, to make it an adjustment to a, you know, a structure, uh, in order to have it rentable. If it were, you know, a significant, uh, portion of the value of the building, then yes, it's, you know, it, it wouldn't be reasonable to invest that much money.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Is that it's not, it's not, I, I know just by, you know, because I know the building and what things cost today, you know? So, you know, it's something that you need in writing, or do you, you know, and again, what, what is that monetary number? You know what I mean?
Well...
I think the issue you should be asking yourself is whether or not combining those two apartments are feasible to the applicant. That's, that's what...
And I, I, you know, I, I think that knowing what it would cost to do it is at the core of whether it's feasible. Well, I think without knowing what it would cost, I, I don't know how we would make an informed determination.
It's, it's not like a few thousand dollars to do something.
No, and, and again, if, if we had that in, in writing here, you know, from someone who's, you know, using their training and, you know, skills and licensing to tell us that, then it's very straightforward from my perspective. Again, I don't want to speak for the other board members, but that's, that's how I see this. I think, you know, we, we want to arrive at the, the right determination, and if, you know, making this one apartment is not a reasonable thing to, to do, then, you know, that's, but, you know, and, and again, I, I don't want to discount your testimony because I know that you're coming here and you're wanting to be as helpful as possible, but, you know, um, it, having, you know, this type of a...
Can I give you an idea, it's gonna be like, you know, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars to do something like that?
Okay.
You know, so I know that, I mean, that's just a, a good estimate for me?
I guess I'm out of touch, I thought it was less, but it's, it's a number that's like, it's, it's a number that's not feasible. Just no, just looking at it with the block and the...
That's about, had to do...
Realistically, yeah.
It's a higher up.
Yep.
You know, if I had to myself, with that, that would be...
They have, they have to put a steel beam, they have to break all the concrete, they gotta get rid of, they gotta get rid of this, so that's...
Right.
That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, to break up and then put a steel beam, because they don't want the roof to fall down.
Dory, I...
Correct, you have to put a steel beam?
Steel beam you have to carry, because of the...
To, to the whole weight.
And the roofs are two different heights at that spot, so there's a lot more.
So, fix the other.
Concrete has to be, once you...
You gotta break that up.
Yeah.
Concrete that has to be...
That's not...
There's a lot of work there.
Yeah.
And then you decide shea lac taping, plumbing, painting.
All, all new floors.
Floors, because you now gotta rip up what's...
Already have all new floors.
I, I, I appreciate you listening to me, but like I said, as my expertise being contractor, I, I thought that number was high, but realistically, it is crazy, everything is crazy today. It's not really, it, it just doesn't make sense to rip the building apart like that when it's already existing.
I'm just, because we had to have our, our cement floor broken up, and it was a considerable amount of money because it was a dry well, and we had to fix all the piping. They don't allow dry wells anymore, but...
If you feel like you have enough, then vote. But you should, you should each go around the circle with each criteria and talk about the criteria. Each of you should comment on that, and then go on to the next criteria and comment until you, you hit all five, and then submit your vote.
All right. We're gonna close the floor for public?
Yes, so, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment.
Seconded.
Vote, please. Aye.
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 All right. All right, how do we feel about, uh, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to neighborhood?
It's already, it's the way it is, it's not changing.
I agree. So, is that a no?
That it wouldn't change, yeah, it wouldn't change anything if the area already exists in that same manner. Can the desired result be achieved by some other means than granting a variance? That's where we're stuck at, but...
Costly one.
Yeah, and it's a good point, yes, and, uh, it would be costly. To the point, and, and I'm probably gonna, the spot I'm getting stuck on is it's Town Center. If it wasn't, they could get an apartment in anywhere between four hundred square feet and eight hundred square feet. But Town Center is the one that has the eight hundred bottom.
The only thing is, do you know what the size of all the other apartments are in fifty-five?
I, I don't, but it, so that section is Town Center, but, uh, you know, that's what I'm saying, what he's applying for. We know that you could do it by another means, uh, without granting a variance, but it's costly, and that we're sure of. And, uh, so, but what I'm saying is, out of character for the town, may not, it may not be out of character because it's Town Center that requires, uh, eight hundred, whereas, uh, I was saying, I forget what accessory apartment code was. It could be, uh, it has to be a minimum of four hundred, up to eight hundred, right?
One fifty-five twenty.
That's it.
Is it?
One fifty-five?
Twenty-six.
I know I brought it with me, because that one was killing me. Give me two seconds, I'm sorry, Jen.
It's a four eighty-six for the smalls.
Accessory apartments. I'd had it working, I don't know.
Just so I know, how, how much are you renting the other apartment, um...
The other apartment is fifteen hundred.
The little guy, the four eighty-six one?
No, that's one fifty-five twenty. Do you want us to rent it?
One fifty-five twenty-five.
Yeah, the one that's rented is fifteen hundred? How much is this? How much is the small one gonna be?
All right, so, uh...
I just, that, I was gonna say, that, that to me is expensive, or four hundred square foot.
So, it's not until we get to Town Center that it drops, right? That it, it has to be eight hundred.
I know, but, no. They, they, they pay like, you know, three thousand dollars for a four hundred. Manhattan, I mean, you know, we're not Manhattan.
I, I can say that reasonably, I agree, that's probably what it is best in my...
Especially if it's a senior, they're not gonna...
I don't know, unless I see figures, just like, and I wish I'd have had that.
Well, God bless them, but I hope their social security lasts.
But this part is what's killing me, that anywhere else, it's an accessory apartment.
Yeah, one level.
They don't want a four hundred, right? So, the smallest one he's got is...
Only because there's, um, senior apartments going up everywhere. So, but they're different.
So, that's what I'm trying to rationalize.
I just was wondering what the price would be. Now, I think they're going up in Hopewell now.
Well, that's what they...
And they're just going over in your, um, Agway. And I, I do like the ones in Billings, those are nice.
Those are nice.
Yeah.
I agree, I understand.
The ones over in New Agway get flooded.
So, you know, I think for me, one of my biggest challenges, you know, we say, is the alleged hardship self-created. So, for me, you know, it is entirely self-created in the sense that we're turning commercial space into residential space, and that's what brings us into the, the code here where we have this minimum requirement in the Town Center for the square footage of the apartment. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. So, I, I do think that the hardship is a hundred percent self-created. I understand why you're there, I'm not, uh, you know, I, I'm not crawling with that, but I, I do think it's self-created because we're taking commercial space right on fifty-five in the Town Center, and we're turning it into, trying to turn it into apartments. And, um, you know, I, I don't know if, if there's no, no way around this or no, no reasonable way around this, because I don't have enough information here to make an assessment of whether it would be unreasonable to make that one apartment. I don't have that in the application right now.
So, what I'm asking is, would you want us to vote on it tonight? Or would you like to do a straw poll and hold us till?
No straw poll.
No straw poll, okay. Okay. Put it to a vote, make a motion.
Oh, you're asking me?
Yeah, well, we can come back with the information. Or we can vote. Those are the, the options up there.
I guess, yeah, come back with the information, I mean, if that's my only, uh...
I would come back with the information.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to bring him back October first. Or do we give him six weeks?
So, when you say information, you want...
I'd like a, a listing of...
I didn't ask him to...
Yeah.
Yeah, something we could put with the application, and, uh, I mean, if somebody comes to explain it to us, that'd be great, but at least if we have something that can go with the application, uh, that'd be great.
So, right now, just to frame this, you know, I, I totally appreciate that this is not a desirable result. And, you know, I, I think you've, you know, expressed to us that it's something you're not planning to do. So, the question is not whether you should do it, the question is, what would it take to do it? And the more you can give us in terms of insight into what it would be involved to do it, the more helpful it would be for us to be able to understand whether it's something we, we can reasonably ask you to do or it just, it wouldn't be reasonable to ask you to do it. That's, that's what, so, you know, you can come back with whatever you think would be helpful, but the more insight it gives us into how, into what it would be entailed to do it, the more helpful it would be for us.
Mike and I, you know, and I advised us of, to put the steel beam in, to break the wall down, to move the, to break up the floor.
As, as much as you can get toward that.
Would anybody be opposed to come take a look at it themselves, too?
No, absolutely.
I'd kinda look.
Yeah, I think I got your numbers on that.
The application, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to stop by as well.
Are, are any days better or worse than others?
No, I'm, I'm self-employed.
Okay.
I'll make the time.
Why don't you wait till after the, the next application, you can exchange?
Numbers and information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, now, doing, doing...
What I don't, what you should not, I have to question you against is deliberating when you're there. You cannot talk about deliber, or do anything that's deliberations at the applicant's property.
It's just a fact finding, trying to understand what...
So, it would not be, it's, it's for your observation.
Not discussion.
Okay?
Yep.
Now, uh, is postponing it until October's date good, or do you want longer?
So, that'd be six weeks.
Six weeks?
Six weeks?
Octo- October's, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, that's not...
I'm sorry, no.
Two weeks.
I'm looking at November fourth, or November fifth. So, October first would be two weeks.
Yeah.
Or November fifth would be...
October first.
October first.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn the meeting to October one.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, um, the public hearing for jet management to, uh, October first.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Thanks for your time, I know that was, that was tough.
I appreciate it, thank you very much, thanks for your time, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Should be very proud of you doing it.
Yes.
That was a really nice letter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, next item on the agenda is the Farino Garage. The applicant is seeking an area variance for a detached garage. Section one fifty-five twenty-six A, sub one D one, states that the accessory structure shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the principal structure in bulk, which is twenty-two, twenty-two hundred and eighty square feet. Therefore, the maximum size of the accessory structure cannot exceed five hundred and seventy square feet. As the proposed structure is twenty-two hundred and thirty-two square feet, the applicant is seeking variance relief for this bulk requirement of three hundred, uh, just over three hundred percent. Good evening.
Hi, Rebecca.
Just, um, I'm sorry, Frank Farino, Debbie's my wife. Um, you said that the square footage that we're looking for is, um, is thirty-two hun- uh, twenty-three hundred square feet? Or twenty-three thirty-two you just said?
So, that's the figure I have in front of me, is twenty...
Okay, so, just, just, I'm looking at the, um, it's a thirty-six by thirty-six garage, and it's two weeks. I, I was told the lead to get the count of square foot, it's a nine foot. The applicant only needs twelve ninety-six square feet.
Yes, that's what's written on the application.
The map says differently.
Sorry, just one second, let me...
It's drawn out, that the lead to the apartment is open, it's not attached, but they're open.
All right.
One of the lineups is closed on one side.
Apologies, just pulling it up here.
So, I love that, I'm twenty-two hundred square feet.
So, on the, on the plan that you submitted, in the table of bulk requirements, um, there's a section here that summarizes accessory structure, proposed detached accessory structure will exceed twenty-five percent of the principal structure in bulk, and then it lists the proposed barn as twenty-two hundred thirty-two square feet.
Because we have listed on the chart itself, it's twelve ninety-six, because we were told that the lead to the, as part of the, as part of the garage itself. Okay, so that's, that's gonna be the total, it's not the total, like, enclosed square foot, it's just kind of shed, it's on the chart.
No, no, I, I, no, no, I, I, I agree with you. I'm trying to figure it out myself.
Yeah, they have listed down as a total, as the total dimensions of what it would be, but the enclosed footage is only...
Well, thank you, sir. So, I, I have, uh, in front of me, a building permit denial, um, that, I don't know if this was an updated denial, but what I have here is your application for a building permit has been denied for the following reasons, and I have a requirement of five hundred and seventy square foot and a proposed two hundred, twenty-two hundred thirty-two point eight square feet, for this structure. That, that's what the building permit denial says.
Yeah, no, that's not the original building permit. That's not what I got, you see, from your building director.
From what I understand, the building, the zoning administrator did not see the updated map that had, that recited the two... map that had, that recited the two thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet that your engineer put on the map. So that's where the confusion is.
So, either way, we, we know that the actual building is only twelve ninety-six.
Right.
It says it on there, so we can, whatever we have to do with the areas, it says it on the map, so we know that it's overhanged. It's not, it's not that size, it's not that, that size of enclosed building.
Well, I'm looking at, you know, and again, I, I apologize, I'm just trying to get, get up to speed on this myself. So, the one image that I, I'm looking at here, it, it appears to show a structure and then two kind of...
The shaded part, you, you see the square, the square in the middle is thirty-six by thirty-six.
So I'm referring to this image that was submitted? I don't know if you, right? So, so I have on one side what looks like an open, just an overhanged, like, what would, what, you know, a porch would look like on a home. Okay. And then on the other side, what I have appears to be a...
Once it's closed, on the back of the mountain.
Okay, so, I mean, and again, that's why I'm, I'm trying to, it, it appears to be closed on three sides.
Well, one side is the building, one side is the back, the other side is...
Correct. Is it, right?
It's not enclosed completely.
Right, the only, the only opening is on the front. Is that right? Okay.
Okay, um, what we have to building is that, that he said, that a lean-to or a carport, as long as it's a carport and it doesn't have a door, it has to be closed on three sides. So, I, I mean, I'm just saying, like, it's, um...
No, no, I...
Either way, I don't want you to think that I'm putting up a building that's fully enclosed, it's that size. It, it makes a difference to the variance, but it's only thirty-six by thirty-two.
Well, I, I think what does make a difference for the variance is how big, because that's what...
The footprint itself.
It's thirty-six. But how big is the variance? That's, you know, uh, because the, the variance in this case is a percentage of the size of the primary structure, right? So, the, the magnitude of the variance is the, um, is the square footage, you know, that, that's what is the, the key element.
The square footage of the enclosed area?
Well, that's, so what I have in front of me is a, a building permit denial that says that the proposed square footage is twenty-two hundred thirty-two square feet. So...
It must have been redid, that was one of the original, it's twelve ninety-six.
Okay. So do you, did you not receive a copy of...
Of the new building permit?
Denial, no?
No.
We have the old, we have the old building permit.
So you never got, they never got a copy? Okay. Done today? Okay, alright. So this is breaking news.
It doesn't get into the variances.
So, unfortunately, I think, I have to, this is what I have to work with right now.
Hey, can you guys...
Well, you have the original.
No, no, I, I know, but I'm, the orig- this supersedes the original. I, I can't, you know, th- this updated, uh, permit denial is what I, we have to consider tonight.
Alright, the, the statute under the code for your consideration is section one fifty-five dash twenty-six, which deals with detached accessory structures. This is a detached accessory structure. Um, I gave you, I gave you the, um, section of the code. Whether it's twenty-two thirty-two square feet or twelve hundred and thirty-two square feet, it's in excess of the...
Twenty-five percent.
Um, twenty-five percent, which is five hundred and forty-five square feet, which is a percentage based on the aggregate square footage of the main home. Okay, that's what our code says. So if there's, I think they put twenty-one eighty, aggregate square, gross square feet on the main home, it equates to five hundred and forty-five square feet for an accessory structure.
To be within the twenty-five percent.
Right.
To be within the twenty-five percent. Either structure is in excess of the five hundred and forty-five, whether or not we're taking the thirty-six by thirty-six or the sixty-two by thirty-six. Okay? So that, that's for your consideration tonight.
Well, one's more egregious than the other, so what, uh, I guess what I'm asking is, uh, are we, should we consider the lean-to parts or just the fully enclosed proposed storage barn?
I think that's, that's something for the building inspector to...
Clarify?
To clarify. And, uh...
Because it's the difference of asking for seven hundred and twenty-six, uh, square feet or what the heck?
The other, the other question that, that is, that the applicant needs to satisfy is the height of the structure. What is the height? Because it's not on any of this...
I don't know, someone's looking for you.
The sheet that you actually had, I think, has the height on it.
The sheet has all the information on it from the man, it's a manufactured garage.
Oh, it's a prefab, yeah.
It's a prefab, yeah, prefab. So that's on it.
Well, the height cannot exceed, under our code, the height cannot exceed the main structure.
It doesn't. It's on, which doesn't miss you.
We just gotta have that in the reading somewhere here. What does it say?
Nineteen point six?
If I'm not mistaken, the, the, the laws are not closing.
Yes.
The reason that it is so high is that one of the meters, well, it's not structurally made it sound, the, the one lean-to for the camper to fit underneath it had to be, the building had to be that high in order to be that clear.
Right. Do we know what the, the peak is on that, the whole?
I didn't hear the question, David.
What the peak is on the house?
What the peak is on the house. Usually, like, they're, I mean, normally, a regular low ranch would be like twenty-five to twenty-nine, but that's how we know that the proposed building you're proposing isn't higher than the house, right? Um, so that will need to know, and we're gonna need to know from Jess how big of a variance we're actually looking at here. Uh, because it's the difference of, would we say, seven twenty-six or sixteen ninety-two?
Sixteen ninety, yeah. It's a, it's almost a thousand square feet difference.
Right. If it, if we're including the, the lean-tos in the variance, it's a thousand more square feet, which is, you know, hard if we're, you know...
Yeah, that's why, that's why...
Yeah, so, I'm trying to think, we, we need to get the, the peak, the number of the peak of the house, and we need to get this clarified with Jess so that we know what we're actually considering here. Uh, because obviously, we would think differently if you only needed seven hundred square feet as opposed if you needed sixteen hundred square feet, right? Um, whoa, alright.
Uh, we still need the peak of the house. Yeah, I understand. I know, I know how long you've been waiting and you'd like to get going now.
Yeah, you asked the engineer reporter, I got that for you, um, everything you asked for, we got.
Yeah, we're trying.
The lean-to, originally, building inspector, and your previous building inspectors, he's waited twenty-five years for this.
Actually, the previous building inspector, uh, he's gone, he said he needed variance.
Alright, you guys gotta talk at the, the microphone so we can get everything down. The previous building inspector said that we didn't need a variance because not only is it twenty-five percent of the house, but it's also a certain percentage of the square footage of the property that we have. And we have two and a half acres, and he said we didn't even come close to the percentage of the property that we were using. So he was gonna approve it, unfortunately, I didn't have the money at that time.
Right.
So we didn't, we didn't proceed with it. And, uh, now that the buildings have come down in cost, and we actually do have the money to put the thing up.
Right.
We run into another problem. I did not realize it was gonna be an issue.
That's not what the code says.
Yeah, code's twenty-five percent of the primary structure.
I'm just telling you what the building inspector said before, so, if I would've known that, I would've just had him approve it and just, I guess, kept renewing the, uh, the application, but...
Um, alright.
I think, I think you, you, from what I can understand from the board, you'd like to see something that shows the height of the main structure of the home.
Yep.
And something that shows the proposed height of the new structure, for starters.
The proposed height is on the paperwork that you have.
So, I'm, I, you know, I, I have something here, but I just wanna make sure that I'm reading it correctly, because it's a little blurry. It looks like it says nineteen point six.
I think it's like, I wanna say nineteen point six.
Yeah, that's that little blurb.
Right.
What do you need, like, you need to find the year of the house, or...
No, uh, well, yeah, it's hard to read. It should be on your, your map.
Yeah, I, I thought that it was, because I remember him saying that we didn't have to worry about it, because it was well within, within range.
And it, and it very well may be, but we don't know.
Yes, you don't, you don't...
I think it does say, where is it?
Yeah, that's nineteen six.
Nineteen six.
Yep, that's on the proposed building, so we have it.
That's nineteen six on the actual building?
Yeah, on the proposed building, right.
On, yeah, on the prefab. The house we need to know. Um, the table of bulk requirements has to be changed so that the board knows what the height of the main house is.
Okay.
Are you saying the, the height of the main house from, from the spot, from the...
Ground level.
Ground level? Like, not where there's their garages, not their front door?
Nope. The, the garage can't be built bigger than the, the house.
No, no, no. When you look at their house, there's the, front door's here, and then you go down, there's like a garage, like a...
Right.
So that's where they're starting to measure it? It's measured from the street, it's measured from the street level. Which would be their front door.
It's measured from the street level.
But that's like a ranch.
Yeah.
Because their, the house is on a hill.
Yeah.
Right, but you have to, it's usually measured from the level of, from the street.
Yeah, well, you are at the property, so you know what it is. I mean, the roof of my house is...
Your house looks, it's, it's, it shows one level here, and then you gotta go down your driveway, because it's a hill.
Right.
And this is where the garage, like, in the house is, and then you had that, like, a little apartment or something.
That would give you two different kinds.
But the highest point of the house is, is what we're looking at.
But that's what I'm saying, you're trying to figure out where, if they have to do it from the, from the street, you're talking ten feet. If you're doing it from the garage, which is down the level of the ground, that's a lot higher.
Oh, you're saying like below grade?
Yeah, it's below grade. Yeah, because when you look at their house, it's, it's level with their property, but it's a hill.
That would be considered a basement, I think.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a raised, it's a raised ranch, correct?
It's, it's a ranch, but the back end of the house, it's on a hill, so the back end of the house is out of the ground.
Yeah, I don't think it would count from the back.
Okay, I'm gonna read to you what our code says.
No, I'm saying side.
I'll read to you the code. Building height, the vertical distance measured from the average elevation of the proposed finished grade at the front of the building to the highest point of the roof for a flat roof, and to the mean height between eaves and ridge for gable, hip, gambrel, and mans- mansard roofs.
That's very clear.
Okay, so then we're not, we're not gonna make it, because we're talking probably fifteen feet max. I'll, I'll go home and I'll measure it, and I'll do the...
How do we take measurements? Well, you would need a height variance.
Yeah, because it...
So, the, the reason why we're asking you this is because we're trying to assess what variances you need.
Okay.
It's not that it's impossible to have a structure that's taller, but you'd need a variance for it.
For that also. Okay.
If you stood at the front of your house, the front door...
Fifteen feet, you're looking at eight feet, and then you're looking at whatever the pitch of the roof is. Okay, the front of the house is level with the ground. Okay, that's probably about fifteen feet, um, I'm gonna say at least fifteen feet. When I had it surveyed, the guy said that it was sixty foot from the road to the end of the property. So you're going from, from the road to the front, my front door is probably at least a fifteen-foot drop, if not more. Okay, and then you're looking at eight foot, okay, I think it, I think it actually comes up maybe two, two or three stairs, so you're looking at maybe ten tops, and then whatever the peak is, which can't be, I can't stand up there, so it's probably at least five feet. So you're looking at, you know, fifty, top, top fifteen to eighteen foot.
That's what, that's, yeah. That's what I was trying to...
I, I complete, I'm an elevator inspector, I deal with codes all the time, so I completely understand what you guys are looking at.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just trying to see how we can actually do this, because, uh, asking the building department what...
The window...
Just saying, asking the building department what we need.
But they're, but I don't think they consider the bottom half of a living space, so maybe that's why they say from the street.
Well, I'm being taxed on it, so it shouldn't be considered a living space.
Alright.
I'm being taxed on two hundred and eighty, but you should use all the...
Alright, so we have a...
So what do we, what do we need for the next meeting?
We're definitely gonna need the, uh, the peak...
The peak.
Of the house, the main building.
Okay, so just, what's clear?
So the building height has to be shown in the main house and the proposed structure.
Okay. But now is the proposed structure from the road also, and is the main house from the road, or is the main house from the front door?
The front of the structure.
It's what?
From the front of the building to the highest point of the...
From the front of the building to the highest p- okay.
Right. And now is that...
The structure, the front of that structure.
The front of each structure, from, from, right in front?
Yeah.
To the peak?
Yes.
Your, your engineer, your consultant has to know the definition of building height in our code, it's right there.
Okay. So that just has to be on the legend over here on the side?
Yeah.
What the building height of bo- of both the proposed and existing?
Both the proposed structure and the current home. And somebody's gonna ask her. And they have to do that, too, so let's have them do everything. And it's, yeah, if you, if it, if the height of the proposed structure is higher than the existing home, you have to...
Put a, ask for another variance for that?
Ask for another variance, exactly.
Okay.
And, uh, you have to redo your building permit to include that information, so it can be denied, and you can come back before us...
Okay.
For the variance.
Alright, so we're gonna clarify the height of the, you know, both structures.
And then the, the bulk of the, uh, proposed storage, so that we know exactly what we're, uh, getting variance on.
If it's including the, um...
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you can consider both variances...
At same time.
At the same time.
Yeah.
You, you don't want us voting on one, and then you still can't do anything...
No, I, I completely understand.
They have to make a determination, because if they don't...
Jess.
And then in the meantime, we'll get clarification from the building inspector.
You'll get clarification?
As a lean-to.
Okay.
Alright, but that, that is also a question you should be asking her, uh, when you reapply for the building permit with, with this, this building height information, you know, get that clarified.
Yeah, like I said, we didn't know about the new building permit until just now. Okay, but when we originally went in, we, we told her exactly what the size was and what the lean-tos were, and I guess when she saw it on, on the, uh, on the picture over here, um, it, it actually is broken down thirty-six and the, and the sides.
I think this map was provided after she denied it. So, it, it says August...
That's, that's the map you had asked for at our last meeting.
Yeah.
When you said...
But it never got to her, somehow it never got to the building inspector.
Oh, it got, it got to them, I, I wanna say, probably a few days, a week before.
I gave it to her two days later.
Okay.
Two, two, three days later, but I gave it to three days before the deadline.
Okay.
I dropped it off like that Monday.
I think you had...
And then I think the meetings have gotten postponed.
She's had the entire time, it was way before our September meeting that got canceled last minute, and then...
Read.
Today, so she's had this for a long time.
Alright, so we'll clarify with her, you also clarify with her on that structure about about the, the carport on both sides, right?
Yes.
If that's requiring a variance or not, right?
Okay.
And get the two heights, we'll get you to redo the application, so now, can you, do you feel good about getting done by October 1st so we can put you on the next meeting? Or do you want to go to November's meeting?
I'll tell you what, let's, let's go, we waited this long, let's go to November, because I don't know if I'm going to get the engineer back out to the house to measure, and I don't know, we're both working now, we were doing this over the summer because my wife was off, so, you know.
I appreciate it.
God bless you.
So I just want to mention one other thing I noticed by looking at the plans here. So, we would need to know the distance from the side of the shed there to the well. That, that, that distance-
Okay, yeah, I thought he put that on there.
Is there, would you happen to know, is there a distance? Because what, what the engineer was telling me, that, that there is no code to what distance it could be.
The building department would know that.
The building department would know, okay, because if anything that-
There is a distance, you can't build right on the well.
No, I'm sure, yeah, you can, yeah. But I'm just saying, I mean, the building can be moved, there's plenty of property, as you can say.
Exactly, so it's not a question of whether you can, you know, the well, the well's fixed.
The well's there, yes.
It's not going anywhere. It's not going anywhere.
Right, so the building is prefab, so you can put it-
But the building is, event, will be permanent, correct?
Yes, okay, so steel building.
Just explain that, I don't know if she knows carports can be removed. They're not always permanent, correct?
Well, this building, this building can actually be just taken down to the ground, so I mean, it's-
No, what I'm saying is the carports. Because what she's looking at is the, is the whole building, including those two carports.
No, the, the, um-
You want her to look at just the main building with the two garage doors.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, because they'll look and see what's permanent, and a carport technically can be taken down.
It can be, yes, it can be rolled in.
So that's what you have to explain.
Okay.
Because she's looking at it as one big permanent structure.
Okay.
And it really isn't, it's only the 36 by 36.
Okay.
Correct?
Unless there's a code we're not looking at, but she needs to be made aware of it.
Unless there's a code.
Yeah, so that we're certain, you and us, then we know exactly what variance we're looking for.
We have to explain, it's a, it's a, carports are not usually permanent.
Yeah, we'll tell her what we're questioning, and, but you guys ask her also, and get the numbers, we'll look forward to measurements.
I think if the, the current, the latest building deny, permit denial is incorrect, I think we'll, we'll want to get clarification on that, right?
Yeah, we'll get a new-
So, okay, so we want to-
So we'll talk to her about that.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll follow, but, but I think you'll want to get clarification from her as well about-
We're talking about as far as the square footage with the lean-tos.
Right, so you have that, you have the height of the structure, confirm both structures, and the distance to that well.
And the distance to the well, okay.
You know, of where you're proposing to-
All right, I'll tell you what, if you ever come in again.
And would, would November 6th be, um-
Is that the next meeting?
Be a good date, well, so no, that's not the, that's the one after.
Yeah, November 6th.
Yep.
So you would, you would have to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to November 6th.
Would, would that date work for-
Same thing, 7 o'clock?
Yes.
Yeah, that's one.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the Farino Garage application hearing to November 6th.
Second. Aye.
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 Where do you teach?
Oh, Hunts Point, South Bronx.
Oh, wow. Wow, you got a drive.
I do.
What do you teach?
I teach ELA.
Wow.
We loop with our students, so I'm in grade, last year I was grade five, now I'm in grade three, and I will loop with my students every year until I graduate.
Is that, English has a second, what is ELA?
Just confirming the square footage.
The, the bulk square footage that needs variance.
English Language Arts.
Okay.
That's what they call it now.
Is it students who need help?
English Language Arts encompasses that are all like reading, writing, grammar, social studies, it encompasses all that.
Oh, wow.
How long you been doing it?
It's my seventh year in Hunts Point.
Wow.
Just got to make it to retirement. That's the dream.
You don't want to work a little closer to home? You don't want to be a little closer to home, that's a long commute.
Uh, city's got to benefit us.
Yeah, yeah. My, my daughter's a teacher, but she's in Dover.
Oh, okay.
Guys, I know it's been long, but thank you for hanging in there.
Thank you for all your-
Thanks for sticking with us, and look forward to seeing you next time.
You'll get there, he'll get there.
All right, make a motion. All right, like to make a motion to close the meeting?
Second. Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Good night, guys.
Night.